Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of August 25th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Sign up for LS Aware, the city's free mass notification system. It can alert residents about a variety of events, ranging from severe weather and other emergencies to more routine announcements such as road closures and water utility maintenance. Messages will be sent to residents on their preferred communication device. You choose how you want to be notified. Learn more at lsaware.net. The city is looking for an audiovisual support specialist to join their team. This position provides advanced support and maintenance for AV and multimedia systems and assists with designing and implementing AV solutions for city facilities. If this sounds like you or someone you know, apply today at lsppeople.net. Get ready to welcome autumn and support your favorite local shops at the Fall Open House in downtown Lee Summit, September 5th and 6th. Over two dozen businesses are excited to unveil their brand new seasonal decor apparel and gifts. Learn more at downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Lee Summit has lots of local destinations, but where do you start? Green Street, a vibrant community space in the heart of downtown, is where Lee Summit comes together. Its three dynamic areas have something for everyone. Green Street Market is a modern event venue and home to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market. Green Street Lawn is a covered performance space hosting live music, family activities, and more. Green Street Grove is a mixture of gathering spaces, an immersive playground, and bold architectural features. And all three areas host community events year round. So the next time you set out to enjoy the city you love, remember, meet at Green Street.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Waterway Car Wash is coming to the streets of West Prior. It'll provide an express or full-service car wash in a convenience store on location. Waterway Car Wash will open in fall 2025. Encho and Agave is coming to Summit Fair. The restaurant features Mexican food with a made-from-scratch menu in a casual setting. Encho and Agave will open in fall 2025. Henline's Boutique and Home has arrived downtown. The boutique offers a curated collection of clothing, specialized accessories, and trendy home goods. Shop the latest styles today. Midwest Avionics and Summit Flight Academy are building a hangar at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport. The repair station and flight school's very own hangar will open for operation in fall 2025. The joint operations facility is being built next to police headquarters. The building will house fire department administration and training teams, city emergency operations, the Traffic Operations Center, and a co-located fire and police communications center. Completion of the project is slated for spring 2026.
Officers en route, night warrant team, armed drone.
When I was about nine years old, my mother promised me that she would buy me a little black poodle for my birthday. The poodle was here in Lee Summit. We lived in Independence. I had never been to Lee Summit before. And the funniest thing when I got here, I just thought to myself, I want to live in Lee Summit someday. So in 1975, we moved here and we bought a little house in Briarcroft for $28,000. We started having children after that. We wanted to become part of this community.
Call regular session number 61 to order roll call.
Mayor Rhodes, he kept seeing me show up at the council meetings and he said, why are you here? And I said, well, I want to know more about what's going on with the city. I was asked to be on the tax review board.
To order the Lee Summit Planning Commission.
Then I applied to be on Planning Commission and I spent four years there. But I said, if I dip my toe in the water with planning and I love it, I'm going to try for council.
Can I repeat after me?
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Cinderator.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
2024.
On the 16th day of April 2024. Thank you, Mayor. So then going along with what Councilmember Carlisle said, we just get back into the room and we hammer it out. You know, we sit on the dais, right? And that's kind of one of the most intimidating things that you do is like being out there in front of people and being worried about, you know, saying the right thing or not saying the right thing. I want to make the right decision. I want to say things that will be impactful, that will be influential, that will help our city more. Most people know this on the dais. I am very impassioned about housing. It's partly because I've done real estate for 30 years, but it's not because I want to sell more houses. It's because we have a need, a tremendous need here in Lee Summit and really all over the country. There are a lot of people that want to come to Lee Summit. They want to live here. They want to buy homes here. I am excited to get more attainable homes, start bringing young families, providing senior housing, workforce housing, all those things that we need if we're going to continue to grow and become bigger and better. We're really in a good place for the future, but we need to continue bringing people in to be our future leaders. The young people that will be coming to live here, stay here, have a stakehold in the community, building businesses here. I built a business here. There's other people that want to come here and live and start. It's just important for people to always be involved in the city. It makes us a better city.
I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 28th, 2025. Can I get a roll call attendance, please?
Ed Yarrington. Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Sherri Frazier.
Present.
Terry Trafton. Dana Arth.
Present.
Jessica Grenow.
Present.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Present.
Chip Tzinski. Randy Benbrook.
Present.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to for that?
I move to approve the agenda.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Vote, please.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Sherri Frazier.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenow.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have public comments time. And this is public comments made in regard to business of the Planning Commission in general. Do we have any? All right, I see none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have item TMP 3428, application PL 2025-082, Vacation of Easement 1900 and 1920 Northeast Discovery Avenue, DPLS P1 LLC applicant. And then we have the approval of the July 24th, 2025 Planning Commission Action Letter. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second? Can we get a vote?
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Sherri Frazier.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenow.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. We will move on to our one and only public hearing tonight. It's application PL 2025-116, Preliminary Development Plan, Small Sliders, 101 Southwest Oldham Parkway, Paxfesta LLC applicant. For those of you who are planning on giving testimony or speaking about this application, if you would stand up, it'd be sworn in at this time.
Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right, thank you. The applicant stepping forward to give your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Mark Peretta.
Okay, can we get your address also?
Yeah, my home address is 2609 Northeast Hunter's Walk Trail, Blue Springs, Missouri.
Okay.
64014.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You ready?
We are ready.
Okay, so we're Small Sliders, a franchise oriented in Louisiana and is now spreading across the country. There is currently 32 locations, this is a little outdated, but now there's 32 locations open across the country. Three in Missouri, one here in Blue Springs, which is our location, our first location in the Kansas City area, and then two in the St. Louis area. Still growing pretty rapidly. I think it was named in the top 50 of up and coming franchises in the country. 350 in development right now across the country. Missouri specifically is doing, has performed very well. The Midwest has performed very well. Top, the top three restaurants in the franchise right now are in Missouri and Kansas. St. Louis being number one, Kansas City being number two, and Wichita being number three. This, this company's board members, Brandon Landry and Drew Brees, the former NFL quarterback. I don't know if you guys know the story, but I can tell you a quick story. Brandon Landry was Drew Brees' backup quarterback in high school. I'm sorry, Drew Brees was Brandon Landry's backup quarterback in high school. Brandon Landry got hurt. Drew Brees got the starting job and the rest is history. But they're still friends to this day. Brandon has started a couple other concepts around the country. Walk On's Bistro, which is probably the most popular I've heard of. And then it's backed by 10 Point Capital, who's also involved in Brands Tropical Cafe and Slim Chickens. My franchise group owns Kansas City area. We have nine to develop in the Kansas City area over five years. Blue Springs is our first. We're hoping Lee Summit is our second. And as far as our menu, it's a pretty simple menu. We focus on quality, not a variety of items. We have cheeseburger sliders, waffle fries, and ice cream milkshakes. We also offer queso, which I will tell you is very popular. Queso, we had a comment the other day, it's better than going to any Mexican restaurant in town. So really, that's, that's the overview of the brand. We opened in Blue Springs in April. We've had very strong support since then. Again, we're the number two restaurant in the, in the country right now out of 30, 34 as of this week. So I am open to answer any questions for you. And my engineer is not quite here yet, but he would be, I can hopefully answer some of those questions if you have him as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Hector, I guess we will have a presentation from you on this.
Yes, good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 21.
Exhibit A, 1 through 21.
Yes.
Noted and entered into the record.
So the application before you is for a preliminary development plan for the 930 square foot Small Sliders restaurant. It is a drive-through facility that also has walk-up ordering. There is no dine-in option. So they provide a canopy, a covered canopy dining area on the north side of the building that will accommodate those walk-up customers. So with this application, there was also a modification request to the exterior approved materials, specifically to allow for 100% metal exterior on the building. And by 100% metal, I mean all sides. Wouldn't just be 100% on partial, on one or two or three sides. It would be on all sides of the building. So to orient everyone to the site, excuse me. So the image on the left is the zoning map that's overlaid on an aerial that shows, well, currently, all the vehicles that you see there on the image on your left are no longer there. So the site is currently under, under development. But it does show with the broken crimson outline the boundaries of the, of the larger Oldham Village Parkway. I'm sorry, Oldham Village Development Project that you heard, oh, September of 2024, and was approved by council in January of 2025. So the star here denotes the general location of the lot, which is Lot 7, that we're talking about. The middle image is the same aerial minus the zoning. Far right is the Oldham Village Plan that was approved in January 25 by City Council. And the lot here that's highlighted in, in the rose color, just to orient everyone, is the specific location that we're talking about within the context of the larger Oldham Village site. So Jefferson Street on the south end, when all the public infrastructure improvements are done, Jefferson Street, which follows just a straight north-south orientation through here, intersecting with Oldham Parkway, will swing out toward the left and provide a new intersection that's further separated away from 291. North of Oldham Parkway, there will be a, what they call a seven road, which is, will be a private street, built to city standard, but it is a private street. And at the intersection of Oldham Parkway and Jefferson Crossing, is what it'll be known, north of Oldham Parkway, is the location that we're specifically talking about. So the site itself is a little bit under one acre. Like I mentioned, it's a 930 square foot walk-up and drive-through facility. In total, there are 19 parking spaces that are provided. And it will have a single lane entrance that breaks out into a double lane delivery, ordering and delivery system that merges back again on the south side of the building. So the inset on the right is a zoomed-in view of the layout and essentially just the light, the site layout and plan for the property that was depicted on that plan that was reviewed by this board in September of 2024 and subsequently approved about four months later. So at the time, there was an effort that was being made to include Lot 7 as part of the overall preliminary development plan approval for the Oldham Village Plan. But they were short at that time. The developer was short in being able to provide detailed building elevations to specifically provide staff in the Planning Commission City Council the ability to see in more detail what the building exterior would look like. Now, they provided a rendering, which is just that, it's an artistic depiction, but it wasn't a detailed building elevation. So a condition of approval for the Oldham Village Plan was that although the site, as you could see, is basically identical, the only difference is there's, on the new plan, there's one fewer parking space where they basically widened out this island on the north side to provide a little bit more protection to the vehicles as they're making turning movements into the parking area. And the original plan, I think, had like a double lane drive-through on the north, which is a single that then splits out into two. Other than that, the layout is identical to what was presented before. And it was identified as a fast food drive-through restaurant on the, on the previous plan. So, but for the fact that they weren't able to provide detailed elevations at that time, this site was approved conceptually with a requirement that a new PDP be required, which is what you have here when that information was provided. So the elevations here, you could see on, you've got all four cardinal directions of the building. It is, it's a fairly simple, straightforward geometric, you know, building. You can see the accent that they use in orange to identify and provide a little bit of articulation on, on each of the four sides. On this north elevation, you can see that they have a, the canopy that covers the outdoor dining area. You can see here that the other orange, the biggest orange piece that they're accenting is most visible on the east and west elevation, which is a suspended shipping container that's used. It, that shipping container aspect does not contain any storage area or it's not, we'll call it unoccupied or habitable space. That's something that we confirmed just to see if there was any kind of inventory storage that's being used in that area. And it is not. So everything, all of the storage, all of the kitchen area, everything is limited to the, to the single floor, to the ground level. But as you can see here, they carry through with the use of that architectural metal panel on all four sides of the building. So this rendering here kind of gives you a little bit more depth as to what that might look like. Gives a little bit more perspective. So you could see it's kind of a corrugated metal of varying widths, we'll call it, with the shipping container having kind of wider widths on, on those corrugated aspects and a little bit of tighter corrugated metal pattern on the, on the body of the building. So by right, the UDO allows applicants to use up to 40% metal on any one building exterior. Anything from over 40 but up to 75% requires Planning Commission approval and anything over 75% requires going through the preliminary development plan to get City Council approval. So again, in this case, they're looking for 100% metal on all building sides. To provide a little bit of context or comparison to some other buildings that have been approved here within the last handful of years, we do have a newer Chipotle building that had a range of 48% and 54% metal facade off of Third and Oldham Parkway, a Shake Shack that had anything ranging from 20% to 72% metal facades, and Golf Ranch, which has their kind of concession area, which would be the most comparable type of facility where it does have walk-up ordering. Of course, it's in drive-through, but it's the most comparable facility to what it is that we're proposing here or what the applicant is proposing. And that facility has 100% metal facades on, on all four sides of each of those different components that make up that pot of, of storage, repurposed containers. So as part of this application, there is a request for a sign package approval for the primary signage that is requested on all four sides of the building. So here you could see the north facade and the south facade. Each of the bill, the primary wall signs that are proposed on each of those respective sides make up no more than 8.4% on the north and 7.7% of the facade area on, on each of those sides. The UDO allows a maximum of 10% signage area by right on either of those sides. The two narrower sides would be the east facade and the, and the west facade. And those areas are looking at no more than 10%, which would be for the east facade here and about 4.5% of wall area on, on the west facade. which would be for the east facade here, and about four and a half percent of wall area on, on the west facade. There are three conditions of approval. Staff recommends, and one of those being inclusive of the modification request to allow the one-hundred percent metal on all sides, and three being the allowance for four primary identification wall signs. So with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hector. I'll start with, well, first of all, do we have any public comments on this application? Okay, I'll start with questions from the commission. I will start down this way. If you have a question, just jump in. Commissioner Benbrook?
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'll jump in. I got a couple of questions. I will start with staff, Hector. So the trash enclosure location, I'm kind of curious about this. Seems like the truck's going to have to pull in and then back out. There's really no, not going to be any turnaround space for the, for the collection vehicle. How do we feel about that? And has any of the local trash collection companies been brought in to agree to that and confirm that that's okay?
That is something that trash collection is not, it's basically private contract in between the user, the end user, and those individual companies. This layout, I wouldn't say it's not necessarily all that dissimilar to certain layouts that we have on some office buildings where you just have one way in and one way out on, on either side of a building. We've not, we've not heard any negative feedback per se on, from tenants or any refuse collection contractors that might express the ideas that this might, that this is a deterrent or somehow negatively impacts their way to get in and out of the site. I don't, I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah.
Well, I guess my concern is when they're backing out, they're going to be backing into the exit lane, right? So trash collection, if it's being done at any time when they might be busy lunch or dinner, that's going to create an issue. I guess the other question would be, and I could, I'll hold this off, but if, if there's any breakfast served, but we'll, I'll hold that until the owner comes up and he can answer it. But that's my concern, is they're backing into an exit, exit way, even though it's pretty, it looks like there'd be good visibility for the most part, is still you get this big truck backing out into an active lane. So I'm a little concerned about that. My second comment I'll go ahead and make now because it's similar. I noticed in this drawing, it doesn't show it, but in the earlier drawing, when it showed the whole site, and even it shows it kind of down in the corner a little bit, the, the future build-out directly to the north of this is going to share that entry drive. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So they've got to enter and make an immediate left against, from what it, it appears is going to be an exit for the future restaurant to the north, because I saw that that had a stack also. How do we feel about that? Is there going to be any kind of backup? Do you think that it's going to be difficult for traffic to get in and out if they're going to make an immediate left if cars are waiting to, to exit this facility?
I mean, there is that possibility. It was something during staff's evaluation of it, it wasn't brought up as a, as a point of concern from, from staff, including our traffic engineering folks. Jefferson Crossing, not that this, not that this matters in terms of how we treat private streets versus a public street, but in this instance, just, it is, it is a private street. The majority of traffic that is cycling through here, of course, the largest amount of traffic will be cycling through on the south end of the site. But I might let, if there are any further questions on that, I might let our traffic engineer answer that. But it was something that was looked at and wasn't identified as a point of concern.
Okay, let me piggyback, then we'll see if we need to bring someone else up. So the corner, which looks like immediate to the south of this, is a right, a right out, a right in, right out only? Is that correct? Which tells me most traffic is probably going to, well, I'm not going to say most, let's just say fifty-fifty traffic is going to come out and exit to the north, which means they're going to want to make a left, since it's a right out, right in, right out at the, at the south there. So if you have cars waiting to make a left, and you have cars trying to get into that site, it seems to me like there's going to be a backup there. I mean, just, just seeing similar situations around the Kansas City area, it seems like that, that's going to be an area of traffic contention, I'll just say. So I would like to, to kind of understand how we see this working a little bit better, because we also have a driveway exiting, well, two driveway exiting right across from this. So now we've got four facilities, five facilities, that are all going to exit within this amount of time with the right in, right out, and, and short drive lanes, in my opinion.
Susan Berry, Traffic Engineer. Directly across, I'm not sure which one it is, one of those is Chick-fil-A. We did bring up the fact that having those two entrances on the east side of Jefferson so close together is problematic. They were hesitant to change that access. They were set on having the way that they have it. They just have their plan, how they develop their sites, but on the west side, we weren't really too concerned about the, the small sliders and the property to the north. The traffic study looks at the throat length, which is kind of the distance from the, the conflict point essentially. And, you know, there's, there's some stacking there. There's room for a couple of cars to stack.
Couple of cars? I'm not sure a couple of cars is considered a stack, but I'm concerned, we'll put it that way. I'll save it for comments, though. I guess the other would be for ownership, for the applicant. Thank you, by the way. So let's start with, are you serving breakfast or is this lunch and dinner only?
Lunch and dinner only. We open at ten AM.
Okay, ten AM, I'm assuming. What's your, what's your closing hours? Ten o'clock or something like that?
Ten o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, pretty standard. I noticed, and so when this first came before us with the overall preliminary development plan, it didn't show an outdoor space. I noticed this time it did. Before, it was just drive-through. So your open seating area outside, it looked like you had some railing around it, kind of designated, which it looked nice in the imagery. Can you just tell us what that material is it going to be? Is it going to be wrought iron, aluminum, wood? What's your anticipation for that railing?
So we have, at our current location, we have, it's aluminum black. It's black aluminum, I guess, painted.
Like an anodized or paint or powder coat or something? Okay. And then I'm assuming you're going to probably want to put heaters out there in like the fall to extend your outdoor hours a little bit?
Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't approached that yet in Blue Springs. I know that they ran into it in St. Louis. They put heaters on each side, so that is probably what we would want to do, is like some kind of portable heater during the winter time.
Okay, portable, so gas-powered kind of a thing?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And then as far, as far as the trash, going back, I had a comment on that. What we do in Blue Springs right now is we have, we have an agreement with the trash company to come before ten AM.
Okay.
So they come at eight AM every day when we have no, no customers.
No traffic?
Yeah.
Okay, is that kind of what you anticipate doing here as well?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do at every restaurant, just because we don't want them emptying trash during lunch, dinner, or whatever, when we have customers there.
It's not great.
No, it's not a great look.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Jana Ford?
Thank you. I'll say this is probably for the applicant. Sorry, I don't go too far. Just a couple of clarifications. The first one, in the elevations, it indicates that the height of the parapet is driven by the, like, the height of the rooftop unit. I guess, is, if it's, if the unit is shorter than anticipated, would the overall height of the building drop in relation?
No, I mean, I, I think the parapet is determined. I think it's, do you know what the elevation is at ninety-two feet?
I don't have that right in front of me, no.
No. I can't remember the exact elevation, but no, it's, it's, I think it's a standard parapet that does not drop with the, the height of the unit.
Okay.
But it does cover the unit.
Okay. Then, I guess about the signage, can you flip to the elevations?
Let you do it. This one or the other, the other image?
This one's fine.
Okay.
So you, you start to talk about the lighting that's underneath the dining area. Is there also going to be lighting underneath, like, where you've got the shipping container overhanging past the dining area?
So there are what you call LED pack lights on this, on the side where the, are you talking on the drive-through side? I'm sorry?
Both sides, really.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the dining area has lighting all underneath, and then it also has LED packs on the walls. And then the drive-through side has LED packs on the walls.
Okay, so everything will be well lit?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then the last question I have is for you, Mr. Hector. So Commissioner Brumbuck brought up the, the entry into the site in terms of the emergency services. What is that radius up at the entry of Jefferson into the site? Is that enough for a vehicle to do a one-eighty?
I don't recall what the exact radius is, but yeah, that, that's something that was also looked at, and there was no comment, no issues with, with the radius that was listed there. Now, this radius here is at fifteen.
I guess the actual number or the value of the radius doesn't matter. I just want to ensure that Emergency Vehicle Services, at its largest extent, is able to maneuver that.
And we, we can double-check. At the time of the final development plan, if approved here, that's something that our, our fire department will look at again, but they've, upon their initial review of this application, there was no, no concern regarding the radius.
Okay, so let's say a large fire truck is coming through, they turn in, they, they're able to clear that fine. What does that look like for them leaving?
What have to defer to, to fire to answer how they operationally work in some of the similar types of sites?
Craig Hill, Battalion Chief, Fire Department. Typically, on situations like that, we, with the amount of crews that we have, we often get into spots that are tight. But we, by our policy, use backers, and we would just back out of the site. If there's no, by the site, there's no way to drive all the way through, so we would just back out of wherever we get into. We often get into situations like that on a daily basis, and for our policy, we have plenty of backers to keep people away and vehicles.
Okay, so if you're backing out of that space, do you need additional room in the back to make that turn raise? Because only the front wheels turn, right? So it'd be harder to go backwards?
Correct, but if we get, if we get in, being able to back out is, is usually no problem. And by the measurements on the site plan, it's sufficient for our needs.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. That's all I have to, thank you.
Commissioner Grono, do you have a question?
I think it's more of a clarification. So I was not on the commission when this originally came through. So are we looking at the entire thing as, in its entirety, or can you define the scope of what we're talking about and looking at today and here to approve or make comments about?
All of, all of it. The short answer is all of it. So all that was approved at the initial stage was just conceptual layout, conceptual rendering. So yeah, so everything that's on this plan here is, is open for your scrutiny.
Okay, so then just a couple of quick questions about how this design would fit in with the rest of the development plan. Do you have any feedback about that? Does it align? Does it not align?
From an architectural standpoint, or?
Design, architect, I mean, those are, those are bold colors, and I'm not against color. I love color. I love having that snappiness, and I, the concept is original, and it's something that's up and coming. But just some thoughts about how, do we know how it would fit into the rest of the development plan? If it does, if it doesn't?
Sure, so when the, when the plan came through, the, one of the questions we often ask when we have these larger developments is of developers, is there some sort of architectural theme that they're looking to kind of weave throughout, these connective threads? And some have very prescriptively written to say that you have to look a certain way. So it allowed that individual freedom to each of those individual ultimately end users and allow for, for it to kind of decide on its own what it's going to look like when it grows up, for lack of a better term. So given that, we do know that there are a number of architectural styles, like we, we know that there's a Chick-fil-A coming that's got its own style. We have our own field house that Parks and Recs will have. So it's, it's going to be a mix of uses with a bunch of different architectural needs and uses that. The idea was to let them in some way kind of determine what it is that their individual needs are, so. So we would say that this would be consistent with it. As far as colors go, we don't have any regulations that say that certain colors are prohibited or, or not prohibited. So, you know, again, at a high, at a high-traffic intersection with a number of different individual architectural styles that are being expressed, we, we don't find that this would be out of character for a high-traffic commercial corridor.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure I have some more other questions. Hang on just a second, because you guys did a great job and answered some, or asked some of mine already. So there, we're also asking for an exception for four signs versus three. Why? Why do we need three signs versus four? If we've got this great, and it's probably not a question for you, but we've got this great branding, we're able to identify, why do we need all four sides? Why are we looking for an exception with the UDO?
So when it comes to standalone buildings, it is something that it's, it's a request that's made fairly often. So this request isn't unique to this user. We have a number of examples where standalone buildings with multiple exposures, particularly on this one where you essentially have three street frontages. I mean, it's, you know, you've got Oldham that swings on the west and on, and not too far to the south, right off the screen. So it, it's a way to provide them some additional wayfinding and better identification. They're not required to have it, so it's ultimately planning commission, city council decision as to whether or not you feel that their request is justified or in line with past practice. Like I said, these requests, similar requests have been made in the past, and they have been approved, but that's not to say that it has to be approved with this one.
Okay. And I had one, so how, and so this is a container-style building structure. Is there, what, how do we know, and we don't know, but it's just, I think that what happens if small sliders doesn't work out? You know, do we feel that this is a space that someone else is going to be able to come in and the building, is the building going to be able to be reused? You know, are there any concerns about that? What is the process to evaluate that? Or do we evaluate that?
We don't necess, we don't really evaluate it in, in that sense. Now, when we do look at the plans, for, for site plans, we do look at just general circulation, general layout. And we, we don't feel that, if, if by chance, we don't wish this upon you. But if you have proof that, you know, it doesn't work out, we don't feel that the layout as proposed wouldn't be able to be effectively reused as a similar type of use if, if a new user were to come in. Architecturally, it, it wouldn't really be all that difficult to, to reface it or, or probably remove the building if needed, to redevelop it. So we don't have a concern in that regard.
I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Just to add three points of clarification for you, Mr. Soto, and then one for the owners. So are the sign, well, maybe this is a question, are the signs illuminated? Did they note that?
Yes.
Underneath, or?
I'll let the applicant answer, but, but yes, they are illuminated. I don't know if every individual sign is, is eliminated, but they, they do have illuminated signs that are being proposed.
Okay, and then shall I, can I assume that the entry, there will be stop signs there? Because as we discussed previously, you're going to have folks that are coming in, it looks like coming into one lane, whereas previously it was approved, or we looked at two, two lanes. So now they're going to be coming off of, I guess that's Jefferson, making a left, and then going from two lane, excuse me, one lane into two lanes in the drive-through, my. And also, the business, I think, that is to the, maybe north, they're going to have, I'm guessing, two-way traffic as well, just.
So those are private streets that they're accessing, so we don't really mandate that. We can ask, but I don't think we can require.
Okay.
It's technically an entrance, not a street, and so I think a lot of developments, you know, if they're large traffic, they'll just put them up themselves. But it's not something that we, that we would maintain or oversee or require.
Okay, okay, thank you. I know I said three, I meant two.
If you think of a third.
Okay, and then I have one more, one question for the customer. Can you, do you have an estimate, anticipation of, of how many employees you'll have?
So when we opened Blue Springs, we opened with about fifty-five employees. We are still maintaining around forty-two right now. We are still maintaining around 42 right now, I think, is what we're at right now. So still very good volume, so we're still quite a few employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question for the applicant, too. If you're done this, but I wasn't trying to jump in, I was just trying to save a walk. Out of all the locations you guys have in the US that you're opening, do you have different color schemes at other locations? Or is this universal and hasn't changed at any of them?
This is universal, this is the brand standard. It's actually a pan-toned colored called sm orange.
Yeah, I understand it's, I understand it's the, you know, the branding that the corporate has. And I guess what I'm asking is if there's any other locations that have a different color.
They do not.
Okay, so it's, as far as you guys are concerned, this is a non-negotiable, that you guys have to be able to have that sm orange.
Yeah, the franchiser wouldn't let us open it without that, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. And then Ms. Berry, I have a question for you. If we could bring up that, I think it's sheet three from the PDP, just to be able to kind of look at that site plan one more time, if that's possible.
Which one was it?
Yeah, you more or less had it right there, Hector.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah. That is the page that I was looking at.
Oh, okay.
Now, in the packet, there's a little bit, there's a little bit more clarity on it. But it looks like there's about 25 feet as far as the setback before you enter into, so in your approach, if you want to call that up on the northern section on the page there. Is that where you were saying that we would be able to queue two cars? No, go farther up at the entrance where you have to make that abrupt left. Yeah, what I'm, I guess what I was hoping you could talk us through a little bit more is just, if somebody's going to take a left in there, if you've got traffic that's coming straight on from that other pad location, which I understand that pad location, what the use is now can change, but it's a commercial use, right? Parking lot pulls straight into that. So you have to take a left to be able to get back into the space. So just if we had cars that queued there because they were going to, is that where you were saying that two cars would be able to queue? In that 25-foot that you have there, plus the additional little bit of section before you take your left?
I mean, it's possible. I didn't actually measure it out, but I think, you know, they could stop further back before they actually get to the shared access. Let's call that a shared access right there.
And that will be a shared access agreement?
No, I don't think so, because this will just be part of the, I assume that's going to be maintained by the development.
It should be between those two tenants, I would expect.
There'll be an easement, yeah. Or there isn't.
There should be a cross-easement access agreement that's there, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, I guess, like I said, a little bit concerned about traffic maybe queuing in the road because we've got, hopefully there's going to be a bunch of traffic there, right? And hopefully, there's a bunch of traffic at the site that's immediately in front of us. And so just a little bit, I think that is a little bit clunky as far as how that's going to work. And I understand.
Well, the site, the site overall, the whole development is very dense, shall we say.
Sure, sure.
And our concerns were sharing access is best practice for the streets. So Jefferson Crossing, which is the north-south out here, we tried to minimize how many access points were onto Jefferson Crossing.
Sure.
So that's why they have a shared access. I mean, the tenant to the north hasn't come in yet, I don't think.
Well, and they have an additional, it looked like they have, and I don't, is that parking in Lot 6 that's to the north of this? Is that parking lot that's shown there, is that access, is that accessible by Lot 6? Or is there actually a break in between the two? Because I realize that's not this application, but figuring out how traffic will flow through the area.
So that one here that you're referring to.
Yeah.
So that is actually some, I know it's very blurry here.
Overflow parking for a different use?
It's actually, yes, it's overflow for the potential, I forget if you can call it what it is, but barbecue restaurant on the north side of the street. So it's overflow parking that primarily used for employees of this future potential barbecue restaurant here.
And so do we want to limit access coming from the north-south into that lot? And that's the reason why, we can get into that at a different time. I'm just, again, thinking about how that lot to the north is going to be serviced as far as where people are going to enter into it. And if we would want that, that access that's all the way to the north to be able to flow all the way down, so that you have a little bit less traffic at this entrance that we're talking about for this application?
You're saying, come in here and travel through this parcel?
To be able to get.
To get to small sliders?
Not necessarily.
No, it doesn't look like it is.
No, 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 I was actually saying more for the lot that would be a future application, presumably. Just, just again, so that we would reduce some of the traffic flow that would happen to this entrance that we're talking about here. So anyway, we can talk about that at a later date. The only other question that I had was, it looks like there's a crosswalk. Kind of as you come out of the, as you come out of the drive-through line and immediately turn back again to the north, it looks like there's a crosswalk that's pretty close there. It's labeled seven and I didn't, I didn't take some extra time to figure, yeah, but it's a sidewalk ramp. So that is what it is. And so just coming out, I guess I had a little bit of concern as far as spacing on that, that somebody might not be paying super close attention as they just grab their food and are starting to drive out and turn around that corner, that there's a crosswalk right there. So just asking staff's opinion of that.
So from the point, so just to give you some reference, so the width of this building is about 40 feet. So we're looking at, once you make that corner, we're probably looking at around 80 to 90 feet before they turn the corner and get to this, this crosswalk area. So I'll defer to you, but that should be enough distance at that speed that you'll be traveling through. There should be enough distance where any pedestrian shouldn't be surprised. There should be enough time to identify them.
And remember, just because it's a crosswalk doesn't mean it's safe to cross. The pedestrian still needs to look for traffic.
Sure.
Yes, in a perfect world, every car would stop for every crosswalk, but that is not the standard. So there is, you know, some responsibility on the pedestrian to make sure nobody's coming.
Well, I don't have a better location for it, so I guess, again, it's a dense area, I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay.
Can you go back to the elevations, please? So if I remember, as part of this PDP, we also get to approve everything, including the signage locations?
You can make recommendations on those things, yes.
Okay, so this is, this might be a little too granular, but my detail, I just went right through it. So on the east elevation, and then if you flip to the X on the smalls, the signage is not in the same location? Which location is it going to potentially?
Oh, between the rendering, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. This would be the sign package, although I'll defer to that applicant. Okay, so it'd be here, off-center, over the canopy area.
Okay, thank you. That's all the clarification I needed, thank you.
Okay. I have a question. Hector, can you pull up the site plan with the other businesses, the other tenants?
Oh, this one?
Yeah. So which one of those is going to be Chick-fil-A? Can you remind me?
It is going to be this one here.
Okay, so then?
Oh, I'm sorry, the one diagonal.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It'll be at the hard corner, yeah.
Okay. All right, I will save my comments for after public hearing is closed. What's below Chick-fil-A?
I'm sorry?
What's below, do you know what is below Chick-fil-A?
Oh, yeah, that is a car wash that we are currently reviewing for final development plan. So it'll be Chick-fil-A, car wash, this one has yet to be determined. We've yet to see anything here as well.
And then the barbecue place up there, the north, okay. All right, thank you. All right, if we have no more, oh, Shannon, did you have something?
Shannon, we're planning managers, so just to kind of go back to Commissioner Ben Brook's concern with the congestion here. If you look at the site plan for Chick-fil-A, this looks like to be an exit-only. So they're going to enter in here, circle around through the drive-through, then exit out up to this intersection to help kind of relieve, alleviate some of that congestion down there, if that helps alleviate any concern you guys have.
So they'll be exiting to the north part of the lot?
Up to the north here, away from the entrance.
And then where, where does it go after that?
So they could either make the southward turn down to this way out, or they can come out this way.
But if they're going south, they're still going to be into that same traffic area as?
Potentially, but the stacking would help, you know, the drive-through when it step backs up, then the entrance, exit would be here and not down here near this entrance.
Okay. This is getting into some details on that lot, but do we have a, is that drive-through? It looks like, is that two or three lanes? I don't remember. Is it two? For Chick-fil-A? They did at least two, didn't they?
So Carl, we don't have an application now, but they're showing two lanes.
Okay, okay.
Two lanes on the conceptual.
You know where I'm going with this, we've had enough issues with the one that we already have and lots of traffic.
Yeah, it's two.
It's two, okay. I couldn't tell from the drawing, all right. Okay. All right, so if there are no more questions, I'm going to close public hearing and then ask the commissioners if you have comments. And I think Commissioner Ben Brook, I already heard you say you did, so I'm going to start with you again.
Thank you, Chair, yes. I'm going to start by saying I don't mind the orange. I kind of like it, it kind of works with this building. Gives a little dash of color, which I'm okay with. I'm very concerned about the entrance to this facility. We've seen entrances like this in Lee Summit before, we have them, and there's always an issue. And if this place, which I'm hoping does very well, here in Lee Summit does well, and as I'm hoping the one to the north, when it comes in, does well, I think we're going to have a lot of conflict there. I think the entry needs some more work. Everything else I'm good with, but I'm really concerned with that entry point. Especially, I mean, we see areas like this, and this area, I'm very hopeful will do well because of its location, coming from the general north during commuter traffic to the adjoining neighborhoods to the south, I think it's going to be a stopping point. And I think there's going to be a lot of people stopping here to grab dinner on the way home because they got to get kids here, or they got family stuff here, or they just themselves are busy. And I think this location in the evening is going to be very busy. And I don't think that entry drive does it justice. I think it's going to be an issue. So I am good with everything except that. And I don't know if I can support this as it stands because of that entry. I think it needs more adjusting, more work. I don't have any concerns about the signage, the color. I would like to have seen a little bit bigger gauge on the siding of the building, because I think 24-gauge is a little thin, especially with some of the hail we get around here. But that's going to be a maintenance issue that if you decide to go with 24-gauge is going to be on you to maintain that building. I would recommend going a little bit thicker, but that's on you. But outside of that, I'm excited. I think this is going to do well. I think this is something that's going to appeal to people. And I think you're going to have a good turnout from the citizens here in Lee Summit. I just, and that's what concerns me about the entry. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Janet Ford?
Thank you. I echo the congestion issue a little bit. I'm honestly not sure what solutions there could be, but I feel like some tweaking could be doable here. For the color, I understand the franchise color is important, especially if the owner made it a non-starter kind of concept. But it would have been nice in this area to start to kind of have a little bit of an architectural tie, kind of like someone mentioned Summit Fair. Saying that, so maybe future applications could consider that. And then circling back to congestion, I appreciate that you have the bike rack there, kind of promoting more of a walkable, bikeable area, but it ties back to the congestion. If I were a high schooler, I think I wouldn't want to be in someplace that's really congested with cars coming in and out. Other than that, that's all, thank you.
I have nothing more to say than what's already been said.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'm okay with the colors, although I thought it, in the spirit of tonight being Mizzou's first home game of the season, could have been better if it were yellow and gold and black. But anyway, I, I've been to the other one in Blue Springs for the first time not too terribly long ago, and I've been there twice. And the reason I haven't gone more is because it is, it's very congested to get in there, especially during rush hour and high-peak traffic. But it didn't stop me, I love the concept, I love the product and that sort of thing. And my only comment would be, if at all possible, you could work on that entry, I would recommend doing it. Because it, it just, it inhibits, you know, future patronage. I mean, I won't go because of that. So just my opinion.
Thank you. I guess I would echo what we've said about the congestion. I have concerns about it. I, I think if the entrance can be worked on, I have concerns with the whole, that whole corridor there because there's going to be, like you said, density and then two places that generate a lot of traffic. So I'm overall concerned about that. But I do like the concept, I like the colors. I think orange is a fun color and people don't, they don't wear it much, so, and they don't decorate with it much, so this is good. I, I won't, I won't say that I don't want to recommend it for approval because I, maybe in the, between your meeting with us and council, if you are able to go back to the drawing board and just look at that a little bit more, that might be a great idea. And if no one else has anything, oh, never mind, Commissioner Frazier has one more thing.
Just a quick follow-up. There's going to be a lot of, I mean, as we've seen, a potential for quite a bit of traffic there. The high school is across the street, period. And then also, I mean, we're looking at a multifamily development, so that's going to bring a lot, too. So that's, that's my primary concern is access. Again, if we can do anything to improve, to widen, whatever the case is, the concept is great, love it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we're talkative tonight. I guess we will be ready for a motion on this application. Yeah. Mr. Busha can answer, yeah, go ahead and ask him.
Can we, how do we have a motion to review, re-review the entrance? To see if there's any, is?
So there's a couple of different ways you can do it. We could take a short recess to speak with the applicant to see how they would like to approach that. You have the option to continue it to a date certain, to give them time to evaluate that. You can make the recommendation that they evaluate that between now and planning, or now and city council. Also, one to point out, too, is that we will also have the opportunity to evaluate that on an FDP level as well. So we will have opportunity down the future for staff to look at it additionally.
Good answer.
I don't know if we could do a recess and could talk about it and then see if, what we want to do from there. Well, I didn't know if the applicant might want to speak to city staff about it.
So one quick question to help you out, maybe. Is your goal to fashion a recommendation to move it on to the city council to deal with this issue? Or to keep it here and deal with it further here?
I, well, I guess it would depend on, I mean, if I were to be shape, or I'd be making the motion, I would want to not, not stop it here. But I think one thing that might make the commission more unified is if we took a little recess where you guys all spoke about it with the applicant and then we open up the, I guess we, I don't know if we open up the hearing or we talk about that again after, like a?
Can we just ask, the next meeting is in two weeks, correct? Does the applicant and staff feel comfortable with continuing it to the next meeting and having a resolution by then? So we don't slow it down too much, but we get a chance to look at it.
Well, if it can be something that can be discussed, I think we should give them a chance, though, to discuss it now if they have any other ideas before we continue.
This is not an easy fix. This site is complicated, it's dense, and it's going to take some work. And to be honest, I would like to review it before it goes before city council.
That's certainly your prerogative, that's what the commission would like to do. If you'd like- If you'd like, if you'd like to continue the application for further discussions on that point, that's an option. Or you can move it on with a recommendation of some sort to deal with this issue as it goes to the city council. That's, those are two options for you.
So, I, I would say this. We can either, we can either discuss it internally, or we can discuss it on the dais. From my perspective, I don't think we should be holding up something that we're otherwise planning on approving when ultimately the decision on how that access is gonna work is gonna move on to council. I do think it is something worth reviewing and that there should be discussion that is ongoing amongst, amongst staff and the applicant. In the meantime, but to Commissioner Benbrook's point, this is not gonna be something that they figure out in a 10-minute recess. Right now, it's gonna require quite a bit of consultation with staff. So, from my standpoint, I would recommend making a motion to recommend for approval with the condition that this continue to be evaluated amongst staff and council so that they are collectively aware of it, and they have the chance to know that this needs to be reviewed.
And if anybody has input on the commission, we could give that input so that if we, if we make that a condition of approval, at least it's, at least it's part, we've had input as to what they should maybe discuss before they go to council.
Yes, and to, to add a little more to the discussion, we've encountered situations like this in the past where there's obviously an issue that you would like to see dealt with, but it sounds like maybe, maybe not. The consensus may or may not be to move it forward. That's what you just expressed. And the record that you've created up to this point, it will certainly be passed on to the city council. The council will be very aware of this issue because you've had extensive discussion. So, then it comes down to, would you like to continue it to have further discussions, or would you like to move it on with an additional recommendation like, like you just mentioned?
If I may, we're the planning commission. This is part of what we do. So, that we send it to commis, to the city council fairly well resolved. This could be a huge issue in this area when you've got five buildings all entering within 100 square, 100 feet, really 100 square feet. This could be, in my opinion, a traffic disaster.
Yes, but we aren't, we are the recommending body.
Right.
And so, we can make this a condition.
Things that are resolved.
But I, I don't agree with that necessarily because I think to delay an application, that can cause, that, that sometimes causes a hardship on the applicant, but...
Can we ask the applicant if it's a hardship? Is a two-week delay a hardship?
Can you come to the microphone, please?
So, real quick, one point of a topic I want to do point out is the overall site plan for the Oldham Village has already been approved with the site location, the access location that is shown here today. That particular portion has already been approved.
Right.
The access to this site is, is off-site. How, it does serve this site, but the overall layout of the street network and access to these facilities have already been approved and passed on forward, so...
That was my understanding that it was conceptually approved. That's the words that were used earlier.
So, the site layout wasn't conceptual? The use in the building was conceptual?
May I ask a question of staff? So, Susan, is, I mean, there's all sorts of different ways to, to try to solve for what we're discussing, right? But one of them that would make a lot of sense would be to add direct access to it. Is that even feasible based on traffic standards as far as having an additional access there and within proximity to whatever that other corner is and all those different things?
We try to consolidate access as much as we can.
Right, and so to that point...
Let me jump in real quick.
Yeah.
Sorry, to, to make sure we're following the proper procedures, it sounds like we should reopen the public hearing. It feels like there's an extensive discussion still to be had on this, on this matter.
So, do I have to make a motion for that, or?
No, you can just, you can just reopen the public hearing and take additional testimony.
Okay, we will do that.
As far as us contemplating options, is there, I mean, one of the options to be able to try to solve for some of the different access issues that we're discussing would be to add an additional entrance into this that would have more direct entrance into their lot. Is that even something that would be allowable or a consideration, and should we consider that?
I don't, I would prefer not to.
Yep.
Because closely, closely spaced accesses have just as much trouble.
More traffic accidents and things like that, correct? Yeah.
I guess my thought is, the people that are coming out of small sliders would wait right here until this is clear to come out. And then if you're coming in, I just, I don't know what this north parcel is gonna be, and so I don't know how much traffic it's gonna be. But as of right now, there's no conflicting movements for small sliders. Until this other property develops, there's no issue. But, I mean, you could try to hold people from the north development here and hold people from small sliders here and kind of treat it as a four-way, as a two-way stop, I guess. I don't know. I don't think we really put that much, you know, thought into how to handle, because they are just two driveways that merge together, and people tend to take turns and...
No, thank you. I just, I've...
So, Rainey Purdue with Cal Valley Engineering. I'm the site civil for this and far from being a traffic engineer. But, I mean, ultimately, doing two different entrances gives you a stacking issue with connections where you got conflicting turning movements, and so that's why they try to consolidate. Ultimately, I, I think Mark would love to have his own entrance if it was allowed at this location, but this was what we were handed and told to use this entrance. As I sit here and listen to all of this, I agree with you that there is a chance for confliction here. Again, it is a off-street entrance. One thing I see is, is if you just turn, made whoever, and again, we have no idea what the use of that other lot's gonna be, if you made that a T-intersection, you could, we have stacking on our site then, and they could have stack, stacking on their site. So, so right away, that's one minor change to, to that site that could, you know, could alleviate some of what you're talking about. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, ultimately, if that's a very high-flow user, small sliders can potentially become a, a, a stack-up where we can't get out because people just keep cutting you off and driving in front of you over and over again. But yeah, ultimately, this entrance is what was supplied to us and told to use, so...
Thank you. And so then if we want to close public meeting and go back to discussion, which I don't, is there any other, do we have any other questions for staff at this point?
I don't see any questions. Did you have some things you wanted to discuss?
So, the only thing that I was, yeah, I was gonna comment on is, is that I think there's a number of different solutions here. And actually, in my head, one of them was that maybe we have some restrictions on, or at least a plan in place for when the next, or when the application comes in for Lot 6, that we do have some of those considerations so that it's not a straight drive-through into their, into their space, and you do create potentially that T-intersection like he was referencing. But I think this is probably a creative solution and not one that necessarily needs to be stopped on our end to go to council 'cause I don't even know that it's gonna be solved on this lot based on the access points that we have.
Right. That's, well, and I think, I was just thinking if, if, I don't even think you can move the, the direction of the restaurant or anything like that to change any of this.
To reorient it, yeah.
Right, right. So, and a lot of this is what you've been given. I mean, it's, it's, so, I would say, I would look for a motion on this if you want to make a motion. Commissioner Frazier, do you have questions of Shannon or Busek about?
No, I think, I would still say if, yeah, I'd still say you could add the, you know, city council or for staff and the applicant to review the, the access before the council meeting.
Oh, I need to read it first, don't I? No, I don't.
I know, it's gonna do.
You go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a preliminary development plan for small sliders, a recommendation for approving a prelimi, preliminary development plan for small sliders on approximately .88 acres of land located at 101 Southwest Oldham Parkway, all in accordance with the...
I'll start over. Thank you, that's what I was...
That's looking for it. I move to approve, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2025-116, Preliminary Development Plan Small Sliders 101 Southwest Oldham Parkway, Pax Vesta LLC applicant. With the condition that the staff, city staff and the applicant review additional options for entrance, improvement of the entrance prior to moving to city council.
Great. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Sherry Frazier?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenell?
Yes.
Tanya Johnne Ford?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has passed, and we will move on to roundtable. Thank you very much. Anything, anything for roundtable? I had something. I can't remember what it was. I mean, I thought of it when, I think I thought of it when you were giving your motion. Oh, that's what it is. Okay, so on the, on our agenda, it gets confusing on the, on where to read that recommendation for approval 'cause that second one is city council verbiage.
We can talk offline on that, and I can, we can work out a process that...
Okay, okay. Okay, I just, and I think there's, there's that sheet. I don't look at that sheet usually for my recommendations, but, but anyway, okay. That's all I had. Anything? Oh, yeah, yeah. We, that was very nice. It was, was it crowded this weekend there? Does anybody know?
I don't have the, the numbers for this weekend. I know opening weekend, we're looking into the five, six thousand range for the farmer's market.
It was the millions.
Millions, millions, hundreds of millions.
It was like 2,000 degrees, too.
Yeah, like, yeah. This weekend, I saw, I didn't attend this weekend, but it was still pretty crowded. I know I'm hearing reports that the applicant, or the vendors are bringing three, four, and five times what they normally bring, and they're selling out by 9:00, 10:00 o'clock already. So, if you come, come early.
Okay, that's great.
Question about the Green Street.
About the Green Street?
Well, yeah, the development, stop. Are you gonna have recycling bins?
It is something that they are considering, and I will definitely pass that along.
Because every time I go, I have a, my stroller is full of plastic cups and everything because I don't want to pitch them.
Right.
So, yay, recycling.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I do have two, two things to talk about. First, I want to welcome our new member, Jana Ford. New old member, welcome back. So, no, just kidding on that one. Just one, just kind of reminder, when replying to emails, please do not hit reply all. We want to make sure we're complying with sunshine laws and not conducting a digital meeting through email. So, just kind of remember that, if you would. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will be adjourned at 6:10 p.m.